I'd like to announce that Norton Media is recording our school committee meeting for this evening, and we'd like to ask if anyone else is recording to please let us know. Great, thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 So we'll start with our minutes on the May 30th, open session meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Hang on a second. We have two.
We have two.
Two sets of minutes from that, and I do have a problem.
Okay.
So if you're taking one at a time, you have your regular meeting that you had, and then your second one is your joint meeting.
Okay. So can we start with our regular meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we will vote for our joint meeting.
Before we do that, I keep thinking I'm not right, but I think I am right. On the second page, Finance Committee had a motion, and the second to reconsider article one at town meeting on June 3rd, 2019 unanimously voted not to reconsider the article. They voted to reconsider the article, not to reconsider it. So we can change that.
So can we vote to approve these minutes without change?
Yes, with amendment.
Motion to approve the minutes as written without one amendment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Sherri, warrants for tonight?
I have reviewed and approved the warrants for May 30th, 2019, in the amount of $147,580.45. I'd like to enter this into public record.
Thank you. So we'll do our student representative update. Cooper, how are you?
I am very, very good.
Excited.
Here, here.
I wonder why. I thought it was out, then I was like, no, I'm getting pulled back in tonight. Come back.
You thought we were done.
I know. So at the LGN, Tomarajo, who's a custodian there, retired, and the Norton High School Rubik's Cube Club made a mosaic out of him, out of 600 Rubik's cubes. So that was really cool and fun to do. We also did it for Manny at the middle school, who retired earlier in the year. So that was really nice and really cool to do. We saw his reaction on Twitter. We're glad that he liked it. And the LGN's last day is tomorrow. At the JCS, they had their expert fair last Thursday. Their field day and barbecue was last Friday, and their last day of school is also tomorrow. At the Yell, the 5th grade dance was last Friday. They had their field trip on Wednesday, and tomorrow is their last day. At the middle school, the luau's tonight, which I will be picking my sister up from, the last day of school is tomorrow, like everything else except the high school. And the Peter Pan Jr. play happened on the 5th, 6th, and 8th, I believe, and I heard it was great. I heard some from some friends who went, that it was really good and really well done. So hopefully I can catch next year's. And at the high school, the senior class night was on the 4th, and the seniors graduated last Friday, so it was a little sad to see some of them go, but they're moving on to new things, college, and so we wish them all best of luck. The fall sports night was last Tuesday. Finals were this week. I assume everybody did amazing, like always, and the last day of school was today, and we're all looking forward to the summer. And, you know, we will be coming back next year, most of us.
So Cooper, I have to tell you, you and Caroline were really quite a pleasure to have on our committee this year, and it'll be nice to have you join us again next year. We know it's a lot of time and effort that you do to kind of come here and present all that the schools are doing, so thank you, thank you. And I can tell you, I was at Peter Pan Jr., and it was excellent.
It was. It's good.
Anyone else?
Very quickly, this might be old news, but Cooper, I think you were just elected the student council president?
Yep, student, oh yeah, student council president, National Honor Society president, and History Honor Society vice president.
Congratulations.
Busy year, yeah, thank you.
So you will definitely have a busy senior year. So, thank you. Have a nice summer.
Thank you.
Next, we will do the recognition of LGN students for being Green Team winners, and Mrs. Grant will be presenting that. Come on up. Come on, Green Team. I don't go anywhere alone.
You guys can come all the way up.
All the way up. Right in front. How's that? Hi, everyone.
So cute.
Hi. Hi. And this year, we did become Green Team winners. We, all year, were learning all about how to be safe and also use, reuse things and reduce our materials. And our culminating activity, which we just did, was making solar ovens, and they actually made English muffin pizzas. And did we melt our...
Yeah.
Yes, we melted our cheese, and it was... How'd it taste?
Good.
And so, it's a year-long project, and we've really enjoyed doing it, and we'll be doing it again next year.
So before they go, just...
Make samples of the English muffin.
The solar power.
They actually all got their solar ovens. They had to decide what kind of materials to use, and all of their solar ovens got over 120 degrees.
Wow. That's amazing.
So Ms. Grant received at the LG a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection that just says, "Dear Ms. Grant, congratulations, your school is a prize winner in the Green Team drawing for 82 compost matters activity books. The Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and Department of Environmental Protection, thank you for your outstanding efforts to increase recycling and pollution prevention in your school and community. We appreciate your enthusiasm and efforts. In close, please find the environmental legal certificate, which you have a copy of." The certificate just literally says, "To Ms. Grant's students, in recognition of the contributions to a cleaner, healthier environment as a member of the Green Team," and signed by Martin Sueberg, Commissioner. So congratulations to you all. Job well done. I have a little something for you. It's just a little something, and Ms. Grant, I'll give you the rest so you can share with the class as well.
Ex-olus.
But each of you gets a special note and a pride pencil, so you can do a lot of writing this summer while you're doing all that reading. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we also have a winner from the Curiosity Challenge at MIT, and Wesley had his picture in question in a book, went into MIT for an award ceremony, and so he also was a winner for...
Congratulations. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, parents, for taking them out tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Very exciting. So next, we have another recognition of Mr. David Denman for conducting SAT practice workshops, and Dr. Bieta will present that.
So, Tavi, if you'd come on up, or not, he doesn't want to.
I'm making him.
So, this is literally his initiative, his idea, to come forward and just give, from October through May, about four hours, about seven or eight Saturdays, with our students, just giving them tidbits, little ideas about how to improve their scores or how to take it for the first time. So we have a very small token of just appreciation. We hope to see you again back in the fall.
Hopefully. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I went to the last two sessions, and they were a lot of help to me, so thank you for that. I took them, and I'm pretty sure I did better than I would have if I didn't take them, so thank you very much.
You'll be back.
So I think we all know that there's so many really kind people who volunteer to support our students and our schools, so thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So we're just going right down this list. We're going to actually skip the next one and move it a little bit. We'll go to recognition from...
She's here. I know, I'm just waiting for the other people.
Sorry, we're just gonna wait for a few more people.
Yep.
So we will do recognition from Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, and again, Dr. Bieta will present that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this one was a big surprise. It was handed down right to me in the office, and this is from the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, presented to the Norton Public Schools, May 2019. This really came through the efforts of Ms. Jen Carlson, one of our teachers at the LGN, and the Leo family, and they actually told me that they were at a meeting in Natick at the big general meeting, and this came forward. It says, "With heartfelt thanks for your tireless efforts in the fight to find and cure cystic fibrosis, raising more than $25,000, showing the community that together, we can do great things." So we'll put this up in the central office on behalf of all of our staff and families that have participated. It's been really easy. I say yes. I do nothing, but we have a child who's dealing with it, and this is an opportunity for us to come together as a community. Ms. Carlson and the family do a wonderful job, and we thank the Leo family and everyone at the organization for recognizing Norton Public Schools, and we look forward to continuing our efforts working to find a cure.
That's great, that's great. Thank you for sharing that. We will have Mr. Gagin share an update on the looping at the Yell. Join us right up front, right there.
On the little stool.
No, right there.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. So this past year, I came into the Yell where they had started looping some teachers to be completely self-contained with the kids, so they would teach all the subjects, and we were in the second year of kind of a trial of it, pilot of it, with Mrs. Carline and Ms. Quigley. And we started this past year, two 4th grade teachers, Mrs. Fettera and Mrs. Troutman, having their class be kind of continue it, so that each year, two teachers would kind of switch back and forth between 4th and 5th grade. And Mrs. Carline and Ms. Quigley are excellent teachers, and they are always kind of asking their kids how things are going and surveying them. And at the beginning of the year, Dr. Bieta asked if he could have some information about the looping and how the kids thought of it, and it was right after they started school. And they thought it was wonderful, because they had kind of come back in very smooth, very easily, back into the classroom, because they knew everybody, everyone knew each other, they certainly knew their teachers, and they kind of commented on that, and that all that anxiety that sometimes kind of builds up as to, who's gonna be my new teacher? Am I gonna like that teacher? Is the teacher gonna like me? All my classmates, are we gonna get along? And everything looked great. I then started meeting with the teachers around December, January, just to kind of continue this discussion, because we knew we were going to maybe continue it. And the more we started to kind of talk about it and discuss it, the more kind of the negative aspects of looping, and I was a huge proponent of it. I started looping actually in my middle school, where I was before, and in both middle schools I was at, we looped special educators that would work with the kids and kind of have that kind of grasp of them. And then at my last school, we looped math teachers. And all the positives that you can read about that talk about the academic basis of the teacher will know you, the teacher will know your skill level and where you are, and some of the ways in which to kind of help you and support you better are all there. But our discussions with Mrs. Troutman, Mrs. Fettera, Mrs. Carline, and Ms. Quigley started to really turn on the social and emotional aspects of the practice. And the more we started to talk about it, the more we started to realize that maybe it was a positive in the academic phase, and we could show some data that the kids were scoring better and doing better, but on the social-emotional side, it wasn't so much better. And it was really looking at some of the kids' answers from what they said in September about looping compared to what they said now at the end of the school year, was, well, I was kind of locked into the same kids, and I didn't get a chance to make those friendships again, and have those friendships, because I was with always the same 25 kids. And so having those discussions, seeing some of those things that were going on, we really just had a very good talk amongst us, and it started to become, maybe this practice isn't so great at the age that we're at. And so we started to think about how we could kind of tweak it, how we could make it a little bit different, and then start to discuss, is it something that we think overall, the positives outweigh the negatives? And I think a lot of times when we sit as educators and discuss things, we want to put things in hard data and talk about, okay, academically, we see the achievement raising, but when it comes to the social-emotional side of it, we really saw that this was kind of hurting our kids. And kids only have a chance once to be in 4th grade and once to be in 5th grade. We really thought that we need to maybe hold back on this, really take a look at it, and maybe look into the future, how we might be able to tweak it. So we decided to stop the looping right now and maybe study it in ways that we could do it a different way maybe later. And one of the things that Mr. Bilawa and I noticed, we have the positive behavior intervention in our school, and a lot of times we give these incentives, and the kids love extra recess or another day of doing different things. And one of the incentives that they always kind of shoot for is to sit with other kids outside their class at lunch, because we force them kind of to sit with their classes during lunch, just to keep it easier for us to kind of handle. And so a great incentive is, okay, you can go sit anywhere you want. When we did this in 5th grade, the other six homerooms would all mix up, but the two classes of Carline and Quigley would always just stay with their classes. And that was just a huge sign to us that maybe this isn't kind of helping them, and maybe this is something that we're kind of locking them in to these 23 other kids, 24 other kids. And so that was one of the big ones that I think we saw, that this might be something we want to move on from. And we all know that girls and boys at this age, they start to form friendships, and then they might be the best friends on Friday, and then they might be the best of enemies on Tuesday, and then the best of friends again on Thursday. But when these situations happen, a lot of times, okay, well, I might not have this best friend today, I have a whole lot of kids to then choose from to be friends with. When all of a sudden, we have started to kind of slim that number down, and they're going from having all the 4th graders that they can be friends with, to now 5th grade, where it's only these 23, 24 other kids, it really started to make a sign to us that we might want to revisit this and look at it in a different way. So I talked with Dr. Bieta, and I talked to Mrs. O'Neil, about maybe just kind of halting this and looking at it in a different way in other years to come, and had some good conversations with the teachers and good conversations with some parents, and I think they definitely understand. My PTO had a bunch of parents that had students that were in Mrs. Carline's and Ms. Quigley's, and they kind of said the same thing. I mean, most of us, well, no, all of us here love the whole idea that we're gonna get a great teacher for our kids. And when you have Ms. Carline and Ms. Quigley, you're sitting there going, I'm gonna get a great teacher, and I know I'm gonna get a great teacher the next year. But sometimes we don't look at what those things might mean in terms of social. So I wrote the letter to Dr. Bieta, just to kind of say that we wanted to halt the practice of looping and study it a little bit more, and maybe see what we could do better, and then do differently in years to come.
I think anybody who's familiar with our school system absolutely knows that that whole concept of social-emotional learning has really risen to the top of our sort of agenda in a lot of ways, that of course, academically, we want students to succeed and achieve, but we're not sure if we should be doing that in sort of, without thinking about their social wellness.
Right.
So it seems to make a lot of sense, right? If that isn't at sort of this highest level of success, then we really should be rethinking it or looking at what's working and what isn't. So I'm not sure if anybody else has comments or questions.
I mean, I think from observing, you know, I have a child in this school, I have, you know, parents with friends, so I think, while the idea was great when we started it, because it's taking away a little bit of the anxiety, but now it's causing almost like, you know, not like an outcast type of, but you know, you have your 25 friends, and you know, you don't get along with 23 of them, that makes for a long school year. You know, so I mean, I've had parents with kids that have come to me, and they liked it in 4th grade, but then you get to 5th grade, and it's like, ah, they don't really like it anymore. You know, and I noticed this a little bit at the ILP presentations, that, you know, one of those classes was, you know, by themselves, and they had all done everything on the Chromebooks, and you have these other kids with some of these great presentations, so, you know, on the cardboard cutouts, so that's where I kind of noticed it too. So, I mean, I think with some tweaking, it could be a benefit, but as it currently stands, I don't think it was the best practice for right now. But back to the drawing, but I think it could be a little better.
How was your first year?
It was amazing.
Oh, good.
It really was an incredible year. I've loved it, loved every day of it. It's been great.
That's great.
Can I just bring up one other thing too, and it has nothing to do with this, but in a few years ago, with the last principal and the principal of the high school at that time, we had talked about just the social-emotional aspect of some things, and they had started a program, I had seen it on Facebook, it was this clip of a kid, I think in Florida, who went and sat with kids at lunch to kind of help with the social-emotional thing, like kids who tend to not have a lot of friends or whatever, who might be struggling with something. And we can talk about it again when the principal comes into place for the high school, but it might be something that might be helpful for your age group, to have the high school kids come over during periods where they can, just to kind of sit with kids, because, you know, you get somebody from the football team or the hockey team, you know, and they sit with a kid, then, you know, it just might help. So it's something, I'll try to see if I can find the clip and send it to you. But it'd be nice if it's something that we can kind of start up again, because I do think it was helpful at that time.
Sounds to me great, bro.
Okay. I do think that at one point, I've been in and out of the Yell for a lot of years, and at one point with one of my kids, there was sort of a buddy program from the high school, that the kids would come down from the high school and have lunch or help kids during a class. It was really, and I think that's what we all are trying to do in sort of Norton, is to build that community across all five of our schools. So anything we can do to help, let us know.
Okay.
So, we started this program last year?
This is the second year.
So this year...
This is the end of the second year.
This year's 5th graders are the first ones to go through it for two years?
Yes.
All right, so we have one set of data points, and we're pulling the report on it, is that what I understand?
Pretty much.
Okay. Because when this was first introduced, it was, we were rah-rah, this is great academically, this is a good thing to do, but Mr. Gagin's own admission, it's been done, or it's being done in other schools. I feel like we're pulling the report on something pretty early here.
I think we're struggling, I think the issue is that we're struggling with the amount of SEL topics that are arising that we feel we're helping to create as a system, and that's a little bit of a catch-22 for us that we, I can tell you, I didn't anticipate.
So, I mean, I'll kind of post-preface this by saying, I didn't, well, I want my child to be honest with you.
Right.
But it strikes me that the one issue is really, well, they don't get the exposure to other kids, right? I mean, it really rolls down to that. And I'm not sure, Mr. Gagin said, well, there's, you know, these guys only get to make friends with these 25 kids, while everybody else has the entire rest of the school. I'm not sure why that is for that one class. Is there something different being done with other classes, other than for that second year, they just mix up again?
Pretty much. You're right.
So it's not the whole school, it's a potential, call it 24 other kids, some of whom probably would have been in their class last year.
Right.
Guys and girls, so really, it's half the class. We're talking about maybe two or three friends. It seems to me like we're pulling the report on something for what is anecdotal at best and is not really supported by data, I don't think. I mean, I get it, like...
Well, I think the issue is, the reason why this discussion is taking place, as you know, I was a proponent of this. I'm the one who came to the school committee with it.
Yeah, of course.
Academically, we see some incredible benefits with it, but the concern that's coming from the teachers to Mr. Gagin and to me and to Jen is that, is the system creating SEL issues that we haven't seen before with populations of students? In other words, are we creating, for lack of a better phrase, are we creating a clique of kids who are forming this special group, that's fine, but then they're not able to really integrate that into the rest of the school when they are with the school? So that's one point. The other point is, if they're fixed to that classroom the entire time, and again, this is one of those things where anecdotal information, they're not changing classes, like the other students are changing classes, as an example, which is also kind of helps to fix what happens at the middle school, where they do change classes on a regular basis. These kids go into a classroom, and that's where they are for the core content areas the entire time, except for specials.
And that's for all classes.
Right. The, no, the other classes switch.
They switch as a class, though.
Right, they switch as a class to another teacher.
There's no exposure to another kid. It's the whole class moves.
Right. But they do get exposed to other methodology with a different teacher.
So this is a teaching issue, then?
Yeah, so that, well, it becomes that they're changing to another teacher versus you only have a teacher. So if I'm stuck with the same teacher 24/7, there's a lot of positives with that. Beginning of the school year, that students know my rules. Beginning of the school year, that students know my expectations. Beginning of the school year, I know the students. Beginning of the school year, they've already been established to what the protocols and regimens are of the classroom. So those are all positive things. What we're saying is that systematically, we're concerned about that we're creating issues amongst students in small groups, and that's a concern.
I think one of the interesting dynamics too, is that we're looping in a building where you only have two grade levels. So students are coming in in grade four, they're assigned to that classroom, and they're with those same students for the entire time they're at the Yale School. In the past, we've done some looping at LGN, grade two to three, where the teacher moved with the student.
Wouldn't that be a better time to do it? We're concerned about the SEL, in fact, isn't the best time to do it, but it's by definition the shortest possible time.
I think the challenge is they're coming in from two different buildings. So JCS kids and LGN kids are coming into the building together at the same time, and so therefore, the students are going into that classroom, and they're not having the opportunity to really integrate with other students as they're moving through. So they get to the middle school, and they really have only had, you know, a classroom experience with these 25 other students, and then they're going out into the middle school, where you're team-based. I think there's a little bit more hesitation as these students transition to the middle school, because they've had that really nice homie environment for the two years. So are we preparing students for that transition, or are we not?
So a couple of things, sort of taking my Marge hat, right, and being a developmentalist. I think that it's so, I think 4th and 5th grade is still an elementary school.
Absolutely.
It's not a middle school, and I think giving them a homie environment is absolutely important to their sort of growth and well-being. So I just want to make sure that our Yale School stays an elementary school.
Absolutely.
But I do wonder, and I don't know if anybody would have an answer for this, would this sort of looping look different if the entire school was looping, so that you had all 4th graders, you know, all 4th grades basically then went with their teacher to the 5th grade? Now you basically have a very small percentage of students doing this. So if you had the entire system kind of looping, wouldn't it be different? Wouldn't it potentially...
So I want to address that because of how this looping idea came to the table. It goes to the core of what you said earlier, that 4th and 5th grade is an elementary school. And 4th and 5th grade in this district has been treated for years, if not a decade, over a decade, as an intermediate school. Why? Because kids did not have a teacher like they do in K-1, 2, pre-K-1, 2, and 3 in the district. So years ago, before I was here, a decision was made that some teachers would teach this, and then those kids would flip-flop as a group, more than likely as a group, but not definitively all the time as a group, to another teacher for two other core subjects, or one out of the three, depending on how you set it up. So we now have well over a decade of a significant number of teachers in that school who have taught nothing but two of the core areas at most.
Or one.
Does that have the change we need to make, though?
All right, hold on. So... So you, well, that, that's years of professional development staff, because you're, you're talking about literacy, people who have not-
No, I mean, if we're going to treat it as an elementary school, then that would be the change.
So, exactly. That would be the change. Is, you would have, we would have to change completely. So if, so the idea that came to the table was, how do we potentially look at something like that? Do we have the teachers, this is two years ago, who honestly are like, I, I want another challenge. I don't mind learning all four content areas, taking the time to do it, so on and so forth, and then implementing it as a looping? Because we would carry the content over the, 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 the two years and the students would be there. That was the goal from day one. Year two, it was put out there to ask, uh, this is before Marty, to ask who was interested. Eh, there's a little discussion, I'm interested, I may not be interested, I'm interested, and the looping began with a second group. And what we started to see, and unfortunately I didn't send this forward and I should, I should have, but some of the comments that came directly from the students to the teachers are frustration by students about being in a classroom for a second year where they know who the disruptive student is. So they're always disruptive student is. So now they don't have an opportunity to not be in that classroom. Now, that may be a positive and a negative, you know, depending on what's taking place. Classroom management, um, socially being kind of feeling stuck. These are students' comments to teachers that it was done via a post where the kids posted it electronically, they could put their name on it or leave it by, leave it by themselves. The middle school tie-in was the teacher comment, uh, to be quite honest. Uh, kids transferring into the hay and having to be put into a classroom and they haven't been part of the looping, but that's where they need to go because of transferring in because the other class sizes are already too large. And then the teacher issues with the curriculum and learning to curriculum over two years and how do we do that if we were to take your idea and do that as a school? It's just impossible right now for us to be able to do that. On the, on, on the pro side, the students loved things like they know their expectations. Uh, they have special bonds with the teachers. Um, at the beginning of the year, they find it to be an easier transition. Having a focus on SEL, um, be, feeling like they're part of a team. And that's one of the questions I think that came up is that are they too stuck to a team? So that's one of the questions that came up with this. So, I mean, talking with the teachers and specifically Marty, with the teachers, talking and talking and talking through this wasn't just one meeting. That's where the decision was made to bring it to you as a piece of information that it may be time to do something different.
So it sounded like on the comments that the positive ones were pretty concrete, measurable, et cetera. The negative ones were, I know who the disruptive kid is and stop putting new students into our class. I mean, every kid's, every class is going to have a disruptive student. So I'm, I'm not sure that knowing who it is versus not knowing who it is is, is necessarily a plus or a minus. It's kind of just is what it is, right?
It's the type of disruptions that you see in a classroom. It's the type of disrupt, we have disruptions in every classroom, but we have, we can have a classroom with a two years of a significantly higher disruptive student than you see in all the other classrooms combined.
Well, then my suggestion would be if that's, if that's an issue in a looping class, take them out of the looping class.
That's not necessarily the best practice for us to just move a student for the sake of moving a student, because then I'll just be moving students every day.
We're moving, we're moving somebody who's massively disruptive, right? It's not, that's moving-
That's not, that's not necessarily something that we would do on a regular basis, move students because of disruptions. Because if we do that, well, then we leave ourselves up to every parent request having to be honored. That's what's going to happen. Because we already have this problem. I'm currently dealing with an elementary school-
Parents aren't, it's, you know, it's a parent request, it's your call.
Unless they file with the Department of Elementary Secondary Education like I'm dealing with right now, and then I have to have a full report done and I, I have to move someone.
I'm disappointed that we, we gave this one year and we're, we're-
Well, no, we gave it two years with a set of students that went through it for only two years.
The first year doesn't count, right? The first year is, is-
Well, it gives a baseline.
Everybody has the first year and it's, I mean, the second year is where the measuring stick. It seems to be at one, one data point, I mean, we could, a, a possible solution is at lunchtime, let everybody mix on a regular basis. Don't, don't pick special days to let them mix. I mean, it's, I, I get it, it's, it's easier for you guys not to do that, but I'm sorry, it is what it is. So I, I don't know, I just-
So correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm trying to remember this. Two, the two teachers that started with this in the fifth grade chose not to take part in the program this year, right? And go back to fourth grade and start over? We had to find two new teachers?
No. So they started in, they originally were fifth grade teachers, they moved to fifth, to fourth grade with their cohort and are now back in fifth grade.
Okay. But we, but then we moved two fifth grade teachers from the previous year back to-
Right.
Because we would have to-
Because you would, you needed space to put them.
Because I thought one of the teachers wasn't, not, not interested, because she wasn't the first one to be interested or something. I remember there's something-
I think we had, we had a harder time finding volunteers the second year than we did the first year. That is true. Um, to go back to the point about the curriculum piece, the self-contained piece has been very successful, where the one teacher is teaching math, science, social studies, ELA to their class. Um, and actually we've made some changes moving forward for next year as well. It used to be that, you know, if Joe and I were, were teaming teachers, I would teach the ELA and Joe would teach math, science and social studies to my students. Um, what we've found with the Reader's Workshop model is that a lot of the work that we do is very closely related to his, history, historical fiction. So all of the ELA teachers will be teaching ELA and social studies moving forward, beginning in September, and the math teachers will be teaching math and science. So more of a humanities thread and a STEM thread. Um, and the teachers are going through some PD this summer, um, to help to support them in that transition. And it was not, overall was positive. Not everyone, but yeah.
We have to completely revamp the thoughts for that school that we had. The fourth grade teachers teach that class, teach the four majors all day and the fifth grade teachers. So almost like the elementary school model where they're not changing, they're not having, they don't have a switch class.
The only viable way that you're going to be able to do that is that as people are leaving and retiring, you, you replace that with a, a, a true elementary model. The amount, the, the concreteness of the math, the science, the social studies, uh, with all of that and the English, if you've only been doing the ELA with literacy and reading, you've only been getting that PD for the last 10 years. You've only been getting those new text materials for the last 10 years. You haven't been on the other side of it.
And for those teachers that chose to loop over these last two years and go with that self-contained model, they have done a huge amount of work in order to kind of catch themselves up, offer them a lot of support, um, using their colleagues and spending countless hours working on lesson planning and teaching themselves, you know, the science and the math and all those things that they weren't used to teaching. So kudos to them for doing a really great job as well.
Wasn't the genesis of this, well, I, I could be wrong, but I thought part of the genesis of this also was that the Yale was, is it a problem? It was, it was, um-
It was time to shake it up.
It was problematic because we were having some, some academic issues.
Well, we had academic issues, we had disruptive issues, but the biggest issue that we had was a perception issue, that the Yale is a stopover, nothing's happening, so on and so forth. And I think that the staff, then principal, um, and now the new principal have said, no, this is, this is not just a stopover, there is a culture here, we are trying to create and develop. And the looping idea that I had, and I'm the one who came to the table with it at the time, two years ago, was we need to try something. Because everything that we were trying wasn't working. We could have more homework clubs and more extra this and that, and we weren't seeing the scores go in any direction. But at the same time, we have seen a tremendous shift in public education, in education, on the type of students that are before us, of expectations, behavior, socialization and so on and so forth. And one of my biggest concerns is when you look at some of, for example, one of these groups has predominantly almost no special education students. Right? So again, a mistake made at the time, but that's how the schedule worked out versus another group may have now more of a balance. So we really don't know how this is going to track. We do know that the teachers are interested in the idea of teaching all four content areas for that one year. The, the, the true elementary model, not the intermediate model. Um, and that's kind of, so it's not looping, but what we learned from that because of the looping was, we have people that are interested and want to teach the typical elementary classroom. They want those kids for the four content areas for the year in fourth grade. And hopefully in fifth grade, they're going to be moving to a teacher who is also just a self-contained general education classroom with all types of students. So it wouldn't be looping, but they would be getting the sense of a self-contained classroom while other classrooms are still going through the process of having one teacher for ELA and social studies versus, or humanities versus another teacher for STEM. I think I said that correctly.
Yes. But just because you're with a self-contained teacher in fourth grade doesn't necessarily mean that would be your placement for a fifth grade. It's just-
Right.
What works, I want placements working, making sure that our classrooms are balanced.
So we can, we're going to continue with that partial model, so the two fourth grade teachers-
The self-contained? Yes.
But the classes are going to move together to fifth grade as we say?
Well, well, part of the problem is that I don't think that we just want to throw away the amount of work, effort and time that professional staff have taken to learn content area, and they're looking to do it for another three or four years in the same grade so that they have a, a core. I mean, we, if we were to hire an elementary teacher tomorrow, the first thing I would tell Marty would be, this is going to be a general education, elementary classroom. We, we need to move in that direction. Because it should be, I mean, K to five for me, pre-K to five for me is, is always elementary. I have a hard time, sixth grade is not being elementary, never mind. So it was an attempt. I think it worked in many ways, it's given us some other information. You know, the information is anecdotal, to use, utilize your phrase, but it's not like we've seen, um, you know, the, the, the school all of a sudden become, you know, a level one school and it's the bedrock of the community. Although I will tell you, it could, number one.
No, we're good at time, right?
Well, we're going to, you're going to, the, the problem with the time comment is that we only have the kids for two years. So you can only, you, you have, so they've been there the first year and the second year, and then they go into a middle school. So that's, that's one of our issues. Now down the road, we may be able to try looping again and say, well, let's do looping for grades one, two and three. You're going to pick up the students and you're going to carry them through that amount of time. I'm not sure that, you know, that's the way to go, but, um, it's an attempt. Uh, we kind of feel that the attempt has gotten to some good information, but we don't think it's the, necessarily the best way to go.
But the conversation is going to continue though.
Right.
It's not like it's just done-
It's not, exactly.
Right. The conversation is going to continue to figure out what's best for all kids. Okay.
So X the SEL part of it, the rest of it we felt worked well.
There are positives around the rest of it, yes.
So what, what options do we try to remedy the SEL part of it before we decide to pull the report?
Well, I think if you have, if you, if I may for a second, I think if you have, if, if you, if the system believes, and this is what we're saying to you, if the system believes that we are establishing and setting up some things that we think long-term are not good, then to me, we're just, we're just pulling it right now. We don't want to create a sense of who these kids are with and not with.
So fair to say we did not try anything other than can in the program, right?
What's the option? I mean, if you loop, you loop.
I don't know, I'm, I'm asking you to-
Right. If we loop, we loop. That, if you have a teacher and you're with that teacher, the moment you start to take five kids out of that, because it's no longer looping.
An option would have been to mix lunch, right? I mean, that's, that's an option, try that.
I, I don't know if that would have resolved the issue, but okay, mix the lunch.
I'm, I'm just saying, I think, I, we've been talking about it for half an hour. It's, and we could spend a week on it and think, help us some ideas if you want, but I mean, it doesn't seem like we even tried.
I, I think we have tried. I mean, there's pros and cons that have come forward from the students and the teachers.
But I'm asking you what were the ideas and nobody's telling you. So I'm not sure that we did try.
I, I don't know what, what you mean by try, like-
Do we, do we think of any other options? Were there any options, say, well, let's, let's try this to see if this integrates the kids-
I'll defer, I don't think so.
I, I see what you're saying and I, I, I can't tell you definitively, this is what we did to help and support that. You're right, that mixed lunch might have been one way of doing it, but I think the relationship of these 25 kids that had been built for a full year going into that second year of the classes i- is there. And some of these kids feel as though that-
Hold, hold on a second. So after the first year, the relationship is there. Why isn't it there in the other classrooms who are also beginning of that first year?
Now, when it, when they're, when you've got the whole group of 25 that have been with, been with one another for the first year.
Right.
They're now going into that second year. And, and someone said it over there that, uh, all of a sudden you now have, I'm a kid that doesn't have any friends with the other 24 kids. Whether we're going to all of a sudden mix a lunch for 30 minutes per day, isn't going to change the relationships I have with those 23 other students for, for the other seven hours of my day.
All right. So now we're just tips and tails. We're not going to read this, we don't want, it's, uh, you, you know, Jen, I don't give a damn about the MCAS, but in the fall, it's going to be interesting to look at those. And if the fifth grade looping class has significantly better MCAS scores, it's going to be tough not to come back to this conversation.
But you can't just base it off of just looping. You, you got to also think about it that those are the two teachers that, that were doing it. I, I can't say that, that Ms. Quigley or-
Well, well, Mr. Gagian, with all respect-
Yeah.
-can't, because you've only given me one data point. So you're telling me now to make the decision.
But you're then telling me that the one data point of MCAS is going to be the report that's going to tell me what's going to be the best.
You're making a decision on one data point, so I'm going to make it on one data point.
So you're going to use on one data point? You're telling me I'm wrong by using one data point, but you're going to use one data point, tell me that you're right?
That's all we have, right? Do we have another data point?
Yes, I have, I have the data points of the kids in classes right now. I can bring in test scores of, of everything from every day.
It's going to be the same classes, I mean, the fifth graders of next year will look at, look at their scores next year in October, I believe, and we'll see how they are. If a looping class is significantly better, then that's, that's a red flag to me.
Okay.
Then we, then we need to look at that and say, wait, maybe that looping does work.
Correct. And that's what we're going to try to do, is that, I said that we wanted to park this situation for right now.
I am going to look at MCAS scores. And Jen, you know, I don't give a damn about that.[1519.33] I am gonna look at MCAS scores, and Jen, you know, I don't give a damn about that. So, all right, we can...
We will definitely, I mean, this is definitely an important conversation that we will continue to have, maybe just something that we can think about in regards to, if, if I can just ask the current fourth graders who are looping, or, you know, sort of have that one teacher in that self-contained classroom. Will they go to fifth grade? And some will be in a self-contained classroom and some will not be? Is that because you will have two fifth-grade teachers in a self-contained classroom? Is that what we're...
Yeah, so Quigley and Cardine will remain self-contained in grade five, and then you will have the other three teams. So, it will be based on student need and other services that they may be receiving, yellow services, head of one, I E P services. They need to separate certain students, too. One of the things that we found sometimes with the looping kids, that if they're together all day long, isn't necessarily the best option. Some kids need to be split up, as, like we do any year in any other classroom, so...
So, I mean, I think that we can sit here and have a, a vision for both sides of this situation, right? We can sort of see the pros and we can see the cons. I think that this is a much bigger conversation that we potentially will continue to have, I'm sure, about this. But I do have to say that when it first started, I mean, the, the sort of data behind looping was really strong. So, it's definitely something that I hope, Jen, you'll continue to really put on.
Sure, absolutely happy to.
But, thank you. Let's see, so we are going to move to the vote to approve the Norton High School Global Certificate Independent Study Course, and Dr. Biotta, you present it.
Thank you. We have a request that can come in during the program of studies. We have a global certificate program, and as you know, we're trying to expand what our students are doing after school hours, not just doing school hours as part of their transcript. This is where the world is going. Students should be provided opportunities to have their transcript with things that they're doing above and beyond. And so, this is a very, as you know, our certificate program is very specific. I mean, as you know, at awards night, we gave recognition for our first round of kids. So, we'd like to put it in as a pass/fail based upon the checkoff list that you see there, which is part of the global, into the actual course, course of study, and call it a global certificate independent study, and it's be of one credit.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
No. So, this would need a vote?
Yes, does need a vote.
So, do we have a motion for a course proposal for the global certificate independent study program?
Someone, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will, this, this is...
Ms. G is not here, I'll be doing the, the next two.
Great, so thank you. Vote to approve the Norton High School handbook changes.
So, these are two handbook changes, one that was added at the end, at the beginning of the meeting today. These are both honor societies where they're clearing up some of their language, what year they can get into, and so on and so forth. Those highlighted, are highlighted for you. On the first one and the second one, the, the, are, the italics are noted. So, the first one is the Nathaniel Haunt, Arthurland Chapter of the English Honor Society, and the application must be from a junior or senior, clearly articulating at three-point-six-seven average or better in all English courses, including English electives. And then, the membership, complete at least three hours of tutoring at the high school middle or elementary levels, attend at least seventy percent, seventy-five percent of the monthly meetings, fundraisers and event, and complete at least one of the following, attend a book club meeting, contribute to or help with the school newspaper, literary magazine, participate in any English-related clubs, or complete any independent reading or writing portfolio to be set up with the advisor. So, I ask that you support this. It does require a vote. We'll take each if you don't want individually.
Do you wanna do them individually or...
Well, no, we could do them together if you want. I mean, it's just a hand, you'd be voting, if you vote, then just vote on the handbook changes for the high school as recommended.
So, why is the one for French and Spanish a little less detailed than the other?
Uh, because, first of all, I think it came in because it was just a cut and paste. They have other requirements, they just put the stuff that they utilize, number one. Number two, they're, they're trying to clear up some of the issues about making sure that A, any exceptions be made to students who has completed the highest level of French or Spanish offered at the high school. Remember that we...
Add the A P.
And, and we added the, the advanced placement, which we didn't have before, to clarify this. And the membership criteria remains enrolled in French, Spanish, four honors, or five, uh, four or five honors, and then the A P as well.
So, what would you prefer us to do, just to vote them together?
Yeah, you can vote, you can take a motion that accepts the handbook changes to Norton High School as written.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve the Norton Middle School handbook changes.
Thank you. As you know, Mr. Hayward is at the L U L tonight, so that's why he's not here. And I said that I could do this. I think it's pretty explanatory in terms of what he's asking for. Concerns about being able to just give out bus situations because the buses are more packed. He doesn't wanna be caught in a situation where he, he has to say yes.
I thought we already voted on this.
Well, you have, but the, you have, but the issue is, we have special...
It's not in the handbook.
It's not in the handbook, number one. Number two, we always have special circumstances, and the handbook has it at the front, and all handbooks now have, that, that subject to change by the principal, because special things do happen.
So, is this bus change going to be throughout the district?
This is predominantly a middle school situation.
I guess it wouldn't be the yellow, because of what's with here, but in theory, it should be throughout the district, right?
I believe that elementary handbooks already say that there are no bus passes.
Already have it.
I'm not sure if the language is exactly the same, but we have not allowed elementary bus passes in many years.
All right.
Many years.
Any other one of these, 'cause I have some questions.
Well, you, you vote them as one, so if you want amendments for each of them. So, I'll go through each of them, and then we can have amendments as you so choose.
Okay.
So, the second one is the aerosol?
Yes, sorry, I didn't think we were still on the first one. So, the, the idea of changing your, your bus or bus stop due to a change of address, we're taking that out now? Or we're still allowed, yeah, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Like, this is more if you wanna go home with a friend or something.
Yeah, but, but it reads, right now, it says, if you need to change his or her bus stop due to a change of address, that's a, no, I'm saying, we're taking it out of pot sort of together, just to make sure we can still do it, because it reads odd to take it out. Thanks, okay.
Okay. The aerosol, next one?
Yeah, so...
Okay, go ahead.
A couple of, a couple of, one question and then one comment. First, the comment, so, we start out with the aerosol sprays or perfumes, and then we switch to aerosols. We should actually make all of the aerosol sprays, because aerosol and aerosol sprays are actually two different things.
Okay.
You can't, you can't actually ban aerosol itself, it's not possible. And I guess two, actually, two questions. So, if we're banning aerosols from the school premises, we're talking, I mean, I'm sure that custodian just cleaning products that are gonna...
This is specifically...
Body sprays.
Body sprays, and speci- and specifically the miss, the, the issues that we have with students, and the use and misuse of aerosol, aerosol sprays.
Okay, so, so that was kind of my second question, is what are we, what are we really trying to ban here? So, if, if that's what we're trying to ban, is there, is there not an easier way to just ban that particular product? I mean, aerosol sprays is really comprehensive, but it's, there's a lot of stuff that you're probably not thinking of that's, that comes in an aerosol spray.
Well, I, I mean, a student who just walks into the school with an aerosol, aerosol spray can of something that's not a body lotion type of thing, we would confiscate that immediately, because we would say that that could be, what's it for? What's its purpose? Students shouldn't have some cleaning products on them.
Yeah, maybe that is just a... Yeah, all right, that's fine, we can move, let's, I, I would just change aerosol, aerosol spray.
Sprays throughout?
Yeah.
Okay. Current language on smoking policy, including smokers' tobacco.
My other question is, is the change that we're making seems like we're including the drug-related paraphernalia. Do we, do we not have a drug policy in place now that we...
We do, but what we're trying to do is connect that, you could have drug paraphernalia and it's potentially not being used for drugs, it's being used with tobacco, as a...
But it doesn't matter, because it's possession, right?
Correct.
So, okay.
And we wanna, what we're trying to, what we end up with is this, we end up with, everybody's an attorney, and everybody wants to come to the table with their own interpretation of the handbook. And what we're trying to do is we're saying, it is up to the interpretation of the building principle. And we're trying to give that person as much leeway on that interpretation, so that, listen, you wanna go get your attorney and bring them in, or you yourself are an attorney, you wanna tell us your definition of the handbook, that's great. It doesn't bother me, good luck, and I guess we'll see you in court, because our principal has said, no, this is the practice and this is the way we define it. All right. The next one is appropriate and responsible use of electronics.
Specials, specials, I, specials, I, what is, I, I mean, I get it, Jim.
Yeah, Jim, we have arts, music, I'm trying to think of all...
STEM.
STEM class, tech class, STEM class.
But we're really trying to remedy it in gym, in the locker rooms, as long as I agree. I'm just asking.
I actually think in the specials hallway...
So, they're trying to stop it very early.
We're trying to make sure that, that, that all schools eventually are probably gonna have very clear signage that says, this is where you can use your cellphone, and it's probably gonna be in an area where there are plenty of cameras. I, I think that's where we're going, that's the direction that we're going in.
Okay.
Because trying to ban cellphones, as you know, is impossible, and not the right, doesn't work for us. And then, the course, uh, course offerings, um...
Yeah, course, course offering, yeah, there's one type.
Which one?
The last sentence before rational, course offer.
I just have, I don't think it should say electronic devices.
What do you think it should say?
Because we, we have one-to-one program, which could be considered an electronic device, right?
Personal electronic devices.
Exactly.
Non-school issued.
Exactly. It needs, it just needs to be tweaked there.
No. Everybody's a lawyer?
Well, that's, that actually ends my next question. Are our handbooks reviewed by, by legal counsel?
Yeah, uh, as needed, yes. They were reviewed in, the high school was reviewed in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, because I asked them to be reviewed because of issues around alcohol or drugs possession and, what was the other area?
Suspension.
Suspensions, but it was suspensions, oh, requests for search being denied in the way that our handbook was written. And then, our elementary went through it, just a section on the policy side, the day-to-day stuff, we, we didn't do.
And just to answer the question that we had previously about the bus passes at the elementary level, that is already in our handbook, that we do not give out bus passes.
Yeah, we do now.
Correct.
Yeah, that was more of a question about...
Equity. Yep, absolutely.
And it's actually two, two, I'm sorry, in the vault, in the last, last sentence. These include, but are not limited to, you should say, either other from optional non-curricular activities, such as dances or other, and you have two others, and they have to strike more of those others.
Yep.
So, last, last sentence, but more rational, yeah.
Okay.
Removal of or from, whatever your preference is.
Yep.
And then, the very last line, you have other in there twice, the second one, it doesn't make sense, it's, take that out.
Take us a second, I'll...
Yep.
Not sure.
So, you can, uh, those are the only changes. Aerosol sprays, the corrections at the end, and adding personal and non-school electronic devices, that clears up the language for everyone at the table. So, those will be the amendments.
And the course offerings, was there something about that?
Uh, that is a, that's the changes to foreign language program that will have all grade sentences, taking a semester of French and Spanish, and a semester of Spanish, as part of the, the program. So, they're, so they're dabbling in it, and then they actually make their full decision.
They make their full decision for eighth grade?
Correct. Yes, and that's, some of that has to do with long-term, what we wanna do is bring that back to sixth grade, but it's all about the Benjamins.
Hi, Cooper.
Cooper.
You, too.
So, we're ready for motion.
We are, three. I'm sorry, who, you're next?
This is the motion.
Okay.
Motion, motion to approve the high school handbook changes with the revisions previously mentioned.
The middle school.
We already cleared that, I didn't, I'm sorry, middle, you're right.
Yes, we already did the high school, so this is the middle.
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the middle school handbook changes with the changes previously mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're gonna go back to the N T A donation to It Takes a Community. Ms. Taylor will join us.
You guys wanna come up?
Sure, come on up.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So, in my first year being president of the N T A, I really wanted to make sure that we, for me, got back to what I've always thought of what our roots were here. As I've said before, this district, my, my mom's baby shower, for me, was in the library at J C S. So, it's, it's literally my home, I, I love Norton. And I remember going to all these activities and doing all these great community nights and having pasta nights and doing things like that, so we wanted to get back to that. And this year, we had our first J C S community night that we, I wrote a grant for, and we were able to host a night. We had about seventy-six people who came through. We were able to do some tours around the school, the kids were able to show it off. Ms. Weber did a fantastic job, she did a reader, reader theater that the kids, like, performed, it was so, so cute. But we, I, that night also wanted to make sure that we were giving back to our community. So, we chose It Takes a Community for all the hard work that they do around here. So, we are happy to present a three-hundred-dollar check to It Takes a Community. Thank you, guys, for all that you do, and we're thankful that you guys are gonna be able to help out and continue what we're doing, so.
Thank you.
So, I'm so sorry.
Yeah. All hugs.
Yeah.
All hugs.
Thank everybody. I'm getting so much better. And while I have two seconds, too, we also, the last week of school, it is the three-hundredth anniversary of public education in Norton. It was June first, two thousand and nineteen. So, we talked to the National Honor Society here, they kind of came up with an idea to give back to our community even more. So, the, Dr. Biotta allowed us to dress down for the last week of school, kind of dressed casually, so that's why I'm dressed the way I am right now, sorry. But, and we asked for a ten-dollar donation, and that ten-dollar donation for, for the teachers to be able to do this and want to, the Norton Historical Society. So, we just were able to go last night, Eric Paulus and Sarah Alves went and presented eleven-hundred-and-twenty dollars to the Norton Historical Society. So, if you tell the teachers that we can dress down, we are all for it. And it was a really great way that we were able to give back. So, I think this is something that we wanna continue doing. I was re-elected president again next year, so I have more ideas of how we continually can give back to our community. We, I wanna expand this to each school, so we'll have different nights that we can have, bingo nights, things like that, so we're well open for suggestions. I remember one of the school committee meetings I was at, we talked about the soccer team doing the volleyball.
Yes.
And I was like, that was so cool. So, we wanna continue to be someone's meal to give back to the town and really make sure Norton knows that the teachers know where we're, why we're here. We're here for the, we're here for the students, we're here for the families, and we're here for the community. So, I would thank you, guys, so much, and hopefully we can continue to do this stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Shannon, I have to say, I think that this year, it's been a pleasure to watch you in your role as president, and I think that it's clearly evident how much sort of pride you have for teaching our children in Norton, but also really understanding our community. And I think you probably know there's some of us, all, lot, all of us, actually, who really are trying to build that community amongst our peers in Norton, and you've been just so nice to invite everybody in Norton to come and visit our school, so, thank you.
We have a lot of really great things going on here. I think we've, in my years here, I've been here for seven years, we've been constantly adding and showing what, what we're doing. I think this one does a great job at that, making sure that we, we shall come in and be like, you should be proud of this, you should see what you guys are doing, and I, we love the encouragement that we're always getting, and anything that we can do between our teachers, our parent professionals, we're all here to help, so.
It's making a difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Watching you guys do all that you do, and nights like this, it's awesome. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
So, where were we, kind of window project? So, we are going to have a window project update.
So, welcome to A C G, Don. I'll let you do all the particulars of your firm and so on, but this is our owner project manager for the window project that is currently underway, as assigned by the Massful Building Authority, along with T Two is the architectural firm that was also assigned, and, so I welcome our O P M, they've been fantastic on top of things, making sure that this is working well, so welcome, huh? Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for the kind words. So, again, to introduce myself, Donald Veloso from A C G, project manager, Jeff Sayes. The window project is underway. I gotta make sure I do this, this way. All right. So, it started at the L G Norris School, if anyone's driven by, beginning to change its appearance. It started on May thirteenth. This was started early because it's gonna take longer than the summer to get the project done. So, the thought was to start early and try to minimize the impact. You can't, cannot do a project like this without somehow impacting the school. The staff has been fantastic, superintendent, business office, facilities department's been fantastic assisting us, communicating to the staff, and the project's been on the, underway now since May thirteenth. The window work, we're doing it at night, again, to minimize the impact to the educational process. Unfortunately, the classrooms look like this after they take the windows out. It's not a pretty sight, but we're able to provide ventilation and lighting. Classrooms that had air conditioners, the, the air conditioners are reinstalled, so children that require the, the additional air conditioning are not inconvenienced. Unfortunately, this is the outside of your school temporarily, but it's gonna change quickly. Non-friable asbestos, so it's, asbestos, it's not airborne, it's contained in, in the caulking and stuff. It's not, it's probably the least dangerous of asbestos. It's being removed. You'll see that the gentleman there in the picture, they're in hazmat suits, they have extra protection of the, of the building. We have a monitor who, he is tasked with just ensuring the safety, to make sure everything's We have a monitor who is tasked with just ensuring the safety, to make sure everything's done correctly, to DEP, EPA, and of course, OSHA standards. So, in this photo, you can see the abatement, so there's actually an inspector watching the process. And in the left-hand photo is a test monitor, so they're constantly filtering air, looking for any type of contaminants. At the end of the shift, the hazmat monitor with license clears the area, and we give a report, and it's placed at the administration office each evening, just in case there's a question in the morning, you know, whether there are any problems. The schedule for the LG Norris was the remaining windows will be removed, seven-one to seven-eight. Installation of window sub-frames, six-eleven to seven-twelve. So, that process is begun. The windows themselves will arrive, and it's the actual installation of the windows, because of all the work that's done ahead of time, is fairly rapid. The windows pop into a frame, they have to be caulked, but it's the quickest part of the process. And that'll happen from seven-nineteen, eight-six at the LG Norris. Demolition and installation of the storefront system, so the front doors, that's gonna happen a little bit later. We're waiting for the glass. Again, you've got security glass, so there's a little bit of a lead time, but that should be completed by eight-thirteen. The bathroom renovations, they wanted to start tonight, they're actually gonna start tomorrow night. And that should be done towards the end of July. Construction complete, contractor off-site, and the site restored is pending clear-story windows. So, there's some windows in the gym area and cafeteria, I think it's called. Those windows were originally gonna be fixed windows because of the bidding, and we saw some value with changing those windows at the, you know, later in the process to vented windows that can open, to get some ventilation in those rooms. There's gonna be a slight delay. So, depending that, we still think that the project's gonna be completed before school starts at LG Norris. Solomon East School, they've just started that this past week. At this point, they've removed, I would say, just three classrooms. And that process is, it's begun. What you need to, Solomon East, is you have summer programs. So, as a completed area, they may rotate some of the summer program classrooms into areas where the work is on. We obviously don't wanna be mixing students with workers. The schedule for Solomon East now, the schedule, Superintendent Baeta, you haven't seen this yet, I got this, but I wanted to give you what the contractor told me as of today. So, again, the demolition started at six-ten, we expect that to continue the rest of the month. Installation of window stub-frames will begin on six-twenty-three through seven-twelve. Window installs, seven-nineteen to eight-six. Demolition and installation of the storefront, eight-two to eight-thirteen. Bathroom renovation, six-fourteen to seven-nineteen. We expect, the only thing holding this project up from being complete for school's start is possibly some shade deliveries. So, that's the little snag with this project that we're working to resolve. So, let me just talk briefly about the shades. We specified a specific shade, and the contractor came back with a shade that we're not so sure that it's the same quality that you bought. So, we're going through that review process. So, rather than just take what they're offering, we're gonna take a little extra time and make sure we get a shade that's gonna last you, you know, fifteen years and not be problem-free. So, there is a little bit of delay, and that's on me in essence, but I just wanna make sure you get what you're paying for. And the Yale School, there's really nothing happening at this school other than, we did do a little mock-up of some ceiling work that's gonna have to take place with the windows. That's been done, we have an idea what's gonna happen. But the window demolition won't start until late to mid-July. It's gonna go through most of August. Installation of sub-frames should be the end of July to the beginning of September. We don't have a delivery date on the windows. So, that's a big snag. We expect that it's going to be right around the beginning of September, which gets us to maybe mid-September with the windows installed. We're anticipating that the finish, the windows in the back of the school will be the last to be installed. The bathroom renovations, those will be done before school returns. The storefront systems as well, that should be done just as school arrives. So, the impact to the students will be similar to the Norris, where there'll be some windows that aren't quite done when the students arrive. But again, we're doing that to minimize the impact as much as possible. Questions?
Looks good.
Yeah.
That's great.
It's been a positive process with Lockheed, who's the contractor, which I know over their experience in installing windows. These guys have worked with them numerous times. I think that, you know, it's always scary, if you will, for lack of a better phrase, going into September, October, when we're coming back. But, you know, we'll look at things like, for example, the central office can be done last, you know, because as adults, we can just move if we need to versus maybe the first part of the building, because it's got multiple floors being done first and stuff like that. But I'll tell you, from, I just visited the schools today, it's just, it cools really quick, and they leave it spotless, which is great, spotless. Actually, our teachers commented on that, so that's a good thing. And, you know, people understand, at the end of the day, we're gonna have better lighting in the room, we're gonna have better air quality, we're gonna have better energy. And that's one of the reasons why the state said that we had, you know, at least three of the worst twelve buildings that the state is doing right now in the state. So, I guess it's good to be number one at something. And we, again, thank the town meeting for allowing for us to get over fifty cents on the dollar on this project, so.
It'd be nice if we could do like a little walkthrough, too.
Yeah.
This summer, maybe we can pop in at some point and just like wear backups and...
Yeah, once we get some of the, yep, we'll get you guys to walk it through.
Yeah.
And I think last, just to close, I think budget-wise, potential change orders look totally reasonable, they're just minimal at this point in there. At this point, they look like their owner...
Don't say it.
Owner... It's my job to keep it, and right now, the designers, they've done a good job, so we've anticipated what we think could be potential issues, and so far, so good. The tough school will be the Yale School, which will be at the end, but right now, things are looking very favorable, that it's, you know, budget is not gonna be a problem, so.
Great. Thank you for...
Can I start the transition to the days in the summer now, when school's being...
Yes, it'll start on Monday.
We really appreciate all of the work that's being done so thoughtfully when students are in school, so it hasn't really impacted from what we've heard our students or our staff, so, thank you.
The contractor that ultimately ended up with, they have a reputation to be very responsive, not everything ever goes perfect in construction. This particular contract is very responsive and gets it. So, if I've had any issues with, you know, they've responded or attempted to respond to satisfy things, and I look forward through the project for that to continue, so that's how they operate, so.
Well, thank you very much for taking time to come tonight.
Thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The vote to appoint superintendent to Board of Directors of Project Contemporary Competitiveness.
So, the PCC program requires, in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty, Section four E, as amended by Chapter forty-three of the Acts of two thousand and twelve, that you consider appointing me as your representative to the Project Contemporary Competitiveness. This is the program at the Stoner College. It now runs as either a full week or a six-week choice, and this year, we have, I believe, three or four students going, which is the most we've had in a number of years. And it is a vote.
Perfect. Do we have a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to, vote on the ad hoc committee membership?
Through you to the committee, there's an understanding that the board selects when the finance committee and the board, the school committee will meet on a regular basis to look at communication, finances, et cetera, for the town. And so, it's my understanding that the committee should publicly vote its two members to that ad hoc committee. So, we need nominations and votes.
Volunteer step forward.
Exactly.
So, I take it that the nominations are gonna be Ms. Cohen and Ms. Gallagher?
Yes.
That'll have to be in the form of a motion.
Do we need to nominate separately or can...
You can do it together, except they're going to the same group.
So, move that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With enthusiasm?
We do have a first meeting scheduled between twenty-fifth and seven PM in the Norton Media Center. Yeah, so we have Carolyn, myself, Mr. Bramwell, Ms. Steele, and then four FinCon members.
Just as a reminder, as if it's being done as a public meeting, forty-eight hours to post at Town Hall with the Town Clerk's Office.
I would be posting the meeting.
Okay, and then you'll need minutes as well. Shocking. Thank you.
Sherry will make sure it is done before then.
And just in reference to committees, I'm gonna be attending the building committees' meetings as well, just to kinda have open discussion with them.
All those in favor?
Yeah, we're not voting on that one, I'm just shouting out whatever I can, yeah.
All right, are you ready?
I'm ready.
We are going to talk about the homework committee update.
So, this year, we put together a group of community members, parents, teachers, administrators, and two fantastic students who have met with me monthly to take a look at our current practices of homework across the district. We spent a lot of time looking at research, we spent time surveying students, staff, and families about, first, we actually surveyed staff about their beliefs about homework, which was very interesting. And we then also sent out additional surveys to staff, to students and to families. And I'll be very honest, I've sent out a lot of surveys in my years in central office. Never in my life have I seen a response to a survey like I've seen to these homework surveys. Homework is a topic that everyone has an opinion on. It's something that people feel very passionate about. And I think our committee actually had a very nice representative group of educators and parents and students that came with strong opinions, but were also very willing to have productive conversations about how we can best move forward in the best interest of teaching and learning for our students. So, what you see here tonight is a first pass at these guidelines that we have come up with. We looked at research, we looked at other districts, at their homework policies, at their guidelines that they have put together. We went back and forth on creating what our vision really should be. We asked staff for feedback, again, once the draft guidelines were established, we worked through the conversations and the comments again as a committee, and this is the result of that work. As a committee, we are extremely aware that there is no guideline that we can put together that is going to really meet the needs of every constituent. And so, therefore, what we tried to do was put together guidelines that we firmly believe in, and therefore, we can move forward with these as our base and begin the conversations at the building level. The goal for next year is to do a lot of work with our building principals, our active coordinators, our grade-level curriculum leaders around these guidelines, and continue the conversation and professional learning with our staff about what does this look like at the elementary level versus the middle school versus high school. And I do believe that our committee will probably get together a few times throughout the year next year and see where we can make improvements as we move forward. One of the things that we used to have as a district and as a school committee policy was a timeframe, ten minutes per grade level, so second grade, twenty minutes, fifth grade, fifty minutes. And what we've heard from a lot of people was, just because you give it a timeline, doesn't mean that every student is really responding to that assignment in the same way. So, what you see here, we talked, we started with our vision of what we believe homework should be. We defined the different types of homework. There are, there's homework where you're completing something, there's homework where you're preparing for the class the next day, where you're practicing a skill that you may have learned. We also looked at implementation guidelines. We asked staff to really think about the quality of homework, why we are assigning something, what is the purpose, what is the connection to teaching and learning? And we also put in some guidelines around the timing of homework. There should be no homework during holidays that are recognized by the school committee. There should be no homework during vacations, no homework during uncast testing periods. And it will be the responsibility of myself and our building principals to really ensure that teachers are adhering to these guidelines. We also asked our staff for flexibility. Our community is becoming more diverse, therefore, we may have families that are celebrating holidays that the school committee does not officially recognize on our school calendar, and we need to be aware of those holidays and make sure that we're making accommodations for our students and for our families. We also talked about the roles of each shareholder in this homework process. What are the roles of the educators? What are they responsible for? What are the roles of our students? And what are the roles of our parents? How can our parents support this with their children? How can they help them to grow into independent learners as they get older and, you know, we kinda take away some of those supports from them? It's definitely not a perfect document. I think, you know, just until Monday afternoon, we were still going back and forth and debating some of the things that were there. But we think it's a pretty good first pass, and we're excited to continue the conversation about it as we come back in September.
Well, thank you, because I'm sure that there is a lot of opinions.
There are, there are a lot of opinions about homework.
Here comes another one.
I felt it coming, so I tried to preface with, we know it's not everything that it could be, and I don't know that we'll ever get something that's perfect.
By the way, this is not a Norton discussion, this is a huge discussion going on nationally. I mean, it's not just, I just wanna make sure that, you know, the public that may watch the show is, this is going on around us, and this is going around nationally, and even looking at countries internationally that have policies of no homework at all, period. You know, you don't go home with work, you go home for family. There are countries that are currently doing that. Again, I don't know what the pendulum is, but this is the reason.
Are a little bit less, right?
Yes, yes.
So, that's, in countries where they're not really sending children home with hours of homework, their sort of social-emotional needs are less.
Oh, right.
So, I mean, I think what we probably would know, sitting in this room, is that each child is different. So, twenty minutes of homework for mine might be an hour of homework for Sherry's, and all of the sudden, the teacher who has tried diligently to sort of present an appropriate amount of homework is suddenly the enemy in that other person's house. So, and it happens also in the opposite, right? The teacher who is presenting so much homework and the family just can't get through it. So, I think just having some guidelines is a start, it's a good start. Dinesh, I know you had comments about homework.
Thank you, but Sherry, I'll defer to you, but I don't take hold of that.
No, go ahead. I was on the committee, so...
So, first and foremost, I'm actually gonna thank everybody who was on the committee, 'cause I get it's not an easy job. At the same time, and, I mean, we all joke around, I always have comments, and I get it, like, oh, if it jars sometimes or whatever, but at the same time, I think, well, at the same time, I think sometimes, I say things a lot of people don't say, because they just are like, "Well, I just wanna be polite about it." For me, there's some good stuff in here, but I think it misses the mark a lot, too. And I get it's a first pass, you know, the first thirty percent...
Do you wanna start with the good stuff? No, I'm just kidding. You can start wherever you want.
I'd like to just, not to be negative, but because of the work the committee does do, I think it's important to just get, what are those three, four key items that you think need further development and/or should just be thrown out according to your thoughts?
Right, so, I guess really, it's more conservative stuff for me. One of the things, and Jen and I, Mrs. O'Neil and I, have had multiple conversations this year about homework. And it's in particular with my older daughter, it's not my younger daughter, who's at the Yale Grade School, by the way, but she's, you know, her situation is such that in the middle school, there's one side, and this is not me saying this, this is a known thing, there's one side where they are absolutely inundated with homework, and multiple people say, when you go to a high school, it gets much, much less, and the other side gets almost none. And there are a couple of different discussions we can have here. The first is, why does one side have so much and the other have none? We're either doing a disservice to one side or both.
Or the other, exactly.
So, or both, because we're giving one too much, we're giving the others none. So, there's one group that seems to go to high school wildly unprepared, and the other group that has a year of hell, for lack of a better phrase. So, that's a conversation, why is there not some quality, why is there not more of a, I guess, a comprehensive instructional path that we're taking in the same grade? And the second, the second part of this is, which I think you guys tried to touch on here, but I don't think you do, is that in addition to coordination on long-term projects and tests, which you have in here, you say when possible, and I would make the comment that it should always be possible, because they're long-term and they're known ahead of time. But the second piece of that is, you know, the, it's the routine homework at night, and I get, like, my daughter might be a special case because she's really diligent about studying and, you know, whatever, but she doesn't take it in an ordinary, long time to do her homework. I think she does it well and does it correctly, but she routinely is awake when I go to bed. Now, granted, I get up early in the morning, so I go to bed a little bit early, but for a thirteen-year-old girl, I mean, she's staying up, or thirteen-year-old child, it's not, it's nothing to do with girls or boys, please don't rape her. But it's a late night for her a lot. And to me, that's, you know, we talked about the social-emotional learning, and Carolyn brought it up, that these countries that don't do this have a much better social-emotional learning adjustment, I don't know what you call it, and yet, here we are, and it seems like it's really particularly one grade. And don't get me wrong, I think she's getting a phenomenal education in Norton and in the eighth grade in Joe. I think she's learning a lot. She surprises me sometimes by how smart she is. But at the same time, there comes a point where there's like, you know, there's a diminishing point of returns on that homework, and I think we're probably hitting it in some cases. So, I think, while this is, this is good, I think there's more that we can be looking at. It's more like that comprehensive...
So, I think, to speak to a couple of your points, one of the things that we tried to do was create holistic guidelines that really could be looked at and kind of utilized, whether you're an elementary teacher or you're a high school teacher. So, we designed one document, and it's, when you do that, you gain a lot because you're bringing consistency to the program pre-K to twelve, but at the same time, you're not able to kind of pinpoint some of those grade-level-specific challenges. not able to kind of pinpoint some of those grade-level-specific challenges. So that's why I think, you know, the focus for the upcoming school year is really to bring these conversations to the building level and have those conversations across teams. That we've had, you know, I've had conversations with you this year, as well as with many other parents, about the differences from one team to the next when it comes to things like homework, for example. So bridging those conversations at the middle school level and talking about what is appropriate, what is the purpose? The homework guidelines say that this is the vision for homework, is that what we're doing? How can we be more consistent? How can we be more respectful of the other commitments that students and families have? And those aren't conversations that are currently taking place.
And that was one of the things I really liked in here, because I remember this year, she had homework on at least one of our vacations, and I was like, you're kidding me. I mean, it's family time, you know?
I agree.
So I, I did like that, that there was the, the specific mention of, these are times that are off limits, you know, and I, I do like that, so.
And I think the other thing, too, and I, I know that probably anyone who was on the homework committee could share with you, that I have my own very strong opinions about homework as an educator and as a parent, of two very, very different kiddos who learn very differently and struggle in different areas. But it was challenging, kind of walking that fine line, and we always talk about the pendulum slinging one way in, one extreme and then one way in the other, trying to find a place where we believe that practicing is, is a valuable tool, where we believe that, you know, reading is a valuable tool, we believe that, you know, creating something and, and using those world, world applications is an important tool, in moderation and in the right way. So how can we come with a framework that will help educators to make informed and well-thought-out decisions that look at best practice for students? And this product that we have here is really that very first piece, because now the hard work comes, where my, my building principals and our curriculum leaders and I have to kind of run those conversations with our staff members who have strong opinions about homework in one way or the other, and kind of come to a place of, this is what the research shows, this is what our students and families are telling us. And it's funny, because one of our members of this, of the committee is very data-focused, and that's just her background. So she's like, I sat down and I looked at all of the, you know, the parent responses, and they're like, we love homework, we hate homework. Homework is great, homework is evil. And, and that's exactly what you found. It was such a decisive topic. I've never seen anything like it. So we have a lot of work to do in that regard.
So, thanks to Jen's patience and her work, I have no patience for this topic. None. And I don't because I've been asking, we've been asking for a long time for departments at the high school, for teams and grade levels at the middle school, for K to five, to come together as educational teachers and professionals with their principals and say, our school, let's use the Yale, our middle school, whatever grade, whatever it is, this is what we're going to do. The independence of, I'm an English teacher in a certain grade, and I can give nine billion pages, and then the other person gives none, will end effective September of 2020. It either will be done by a committee at the school level that comes together and says, you know what, I have to give up some of this in order to get some of that, or it will be top-down via voter policy of the school committee on my recommendation. It's got to come to some type of a situation. If I sent out an email, which I do, that says no homework, and then I hear from a person who has a child at the high school, not you, but I hear from a parent, excuse me, I hear from a parent about why does my kid have to write a 10-page paper over, they clearly are, you know, just deciding to do whatever the heck they want to do and they want to do it. So I am fully engaged in a process of waiting another year for all the difficult discussions to happen. I am not an anti-homework person. I believe homework has a place. I really do, always have, but I'm just sick and tired of phone calls after phone call after phone call, and email after email about why does this team have and this team don't, why does this grade four teacher, this grade five teacher, this grade three teacher, and again, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, it's just, there should be a standard of expectation. The experience of how a teacher teaches, the methodology that they use, is going to always be different, and I am never going to want everybody to just be a bunch of robots. But there needs to be an understanding that if you're in a X class and another student is in the Y class, and it's the same grade and the same content, there has to be some understanding about what homework is, period.
So, one thing that I think happens, sort, or, or my experience has been, is that there are a lot of teachers who will put a time limit on it, and I know we get to that time limit, and I get all of that. I can sort of, you know, my daughter is in a class, in a unit with her cousin, my daughter is done with homework within 30 minutes and does it very, very well, and my niece is working three hours later on the same exact assignments, because there's this level of perfection. So I think that, you know, you sort of mentioned something as well, I mean, I think that they're really, as, as classroom teachers, I'm not sure that there's a formula to follow, right? I mean, we certainly have guidelines and expectations, but there isn't certain, sort, kind of this academic formula that says, if you do A plus B equals C, you'll have this exact same classrooms kind of homework system. So everybody's so individual that one teacher will give 20 math problems and another teacher will give 40 math problems, because those 20 math problems will take as much time as the 40 math problems or whatever. But I, I think that this is a really, it's a high-stakes conversation, because so many children are struggling at home to complete homework. And I think that, you know, Dinesh, you sort of said something that's so important, that our children should certainly have the opportunity to practice, but they shouldn't be doing it for hours and hours. And I do think some of that is also on this level of perfection that so many children we're seeing, and I don't exactly know why. I don't know if it comes from sort of, from a school system saying, we want the best, we want the smartest, we want, you know, you to, to be kind of top-notch, or if it comes from parents, but I think you would agree, Dr. Bayetta, that parents are on school brains all the time.
Too much, yeah.
And if they do not see an A, there's a concern. And I'm not exactly sure, so I, so I think that this is somewhat cultural as well, that there's this kind of expectation of perfection, and if you don't do your homework, and if you don't do it well, and if you don't complete it, and I think it gets to sort of what you shared, Dinesh, about your daughter, that she does her homework and does it well, but she's always sort of thinking and studying and, and making sure she's 100% prepared. I'm very lucky that my daughter just does it and says, yeah, I'm done. Like, she just knows when her breaking point is and puts it away. But that is her personality, that's who she is. So I don't think all children are like that, I don't think all parents are like that, I don't think all families are like that, and that's why we see such an array of opinions.
And, and I think, too, I've looked at this document so many times, I can't find what I'm looking for right now, but one of the things we kept talking about is, you can't, there's no set formula, because every student is different, and that's why we need to be creating assignment, homework assignments for students that are meaningful and relevant to that, that student's learning needs, which is obviously a much more, much easier task when you're the classroom teacher of 22 students than you are if you're, you know, you have 120 students.
One of, one of the big ones that always comes up is the extension, is the, is the, complete this for homework. So they've been working in groups in class for half an hour, and now, you finish at home. So for some student, that, that is such a, you know, we're, we're trying to help to, to clarify, well, so what's homework versus what you as an individual student may have just been given more time to complete?
Right. And often, we talked about this, too, like, it comes from a good place in the mind of the teacher, I'm giving you more time to finish, where for students, it creates anxiety often.
I think one of the things that struck me when I read this earlier was the no homework days. So what, what kind of set me up, and I, like Dinesh, have a student who works very hard in the eighth grade. Luckily, she's very diligent, she's very, I get home, I walk the dogs, I do this, I do my homework, by the time I get home, everything's done. What struck me this year was the subject-specific MCAS. She still had homework in the other classes that weren't MCAS testing, which struck me as, so, and, and we've all had this discussion, MCAS equals anxiety to me. So, you know, it's like you go out, you get the, you get the candy that they can chew on, you get ready, you get the good night's sleep, you get the good breakfast, oh, by the way, here's two hours of homework you have to do before you do all that and get ready for your, your subject-specific MCAS, which I thought kind of set me off a little bit this year.
So we tried to every parameters around that as well. And I think we've never had a document like this before. Our, our old homework policies were very general. They weren't the type of policy or, or guideline to create conversation, and that's what we're hoping that this does. I think the two most impressive people that were on our homework committee were our two students from the high school, both.
Not Sherri, huh?
Well, Sherri was also extremely impressive.
I came in and I was like, I want homework gone. I don't like homework. I want it gone.
But we had a lot of great conversation. Our students were extremely thoughtful, very willing to have honest dialogue with us about their concerns, their, the expectations of their teachers, their expectations for, for their teachers, and the other commitments that they have. So having students on that, on that committee was fantastic, and they were really, really helped us to kind of formulate some of our goals.
And I think just going back to the beginning of when we first met as a committee, it was, it was really kind of a room divided. I was kind of more like, we really need to limit, I, I kind of went in as a parent, even though I have the school committee in the back of my mind, because I'm thinking, I got a lot to say about this. And there were some educators who were, you know, very strong, and we need homework, and that was it. And after all the discussions, and, and me as a parent saying, well, what you may not understand, because your kids are grown, is our kids, the amount of after-school activities they have. It's not like when I went to school, and we were just home, we did our homework, we went out and played. These kids have structured activities that they have to be at at a certain time, so it's constantly, let's go, let's go, let's go.
I mean, just early, we saw where Cooper's got himself into 13 years, so I mean, at some point, you'll have to do homework, too.
Right. So I think at the end of, at the end of our, you know, towards the end of our meetings, I think the realization was that the educators really needed to kind of be held accountable to stay on task with what homework should really look like, and it should be consistent. We did talk about putting guidelines in, which I thought we had done, but then I had read some individual remarks and realized we didn't. It's very difficult to do the guidelines, because, you know, the teachers should be talking to each other when kids start rotating through different classes.
And it's funny, because if you had, you know, Sherri made the comment that we really were that room divided at that first meeting. If you had asked me on that first meeting if we would have come to with it at this point with a document that we all are in agreement on and feel pretty good about?
And this is true in every situation, I guess, is there's got to be communication amongst the teachers, right? The second thing, and this is where I think they may fall short, is you got to check the egos at the door, your, your, your subject is not more important than the next subject. And they got to realize that, and when there's something like an MCAS, okay, maybe that's not the one for you to get home, maybe that's not to take, take that off. It doesn't have to happen.
Not allowed to anymore.
So that's, that's something to think about, and the other thing, this is a real quick one, is the group project homework, get rid of it. Stop it, stop it today, stop it tomorrow.
So many times my daughter was left out in the, in the dark, because she couldn't get.
You got to stop it. It's, it's not a good system, it's frankly, in my opinion, it comes off as lazy. Too many situations where if it's a group of four, three kids don't do any work, you got to stop the group project.
I, I agree 100%, because my son in seventh grade, just, he kind of took a kid under his wing in a subject that he is not strong in, and he did badly on a group project, and, and he came home and said, you've always told me to be kind, I was being kind. And we were like, that's great, I'm so proud of you for that, but the subject that you struggle in, now his grade is, you know, it will be affected because of a group project.
I told you, I'm saying things nobody wants to say, you're infuriating parents with that. People are furious about it, so it's just something to think about.
It doesn't work.
I would.
And I think that speaks to access for a lot of our students as well, if you're thinking about students getting together outside of the school day, whether it's transportation or internet access at home, device access, access, those types of things. We need to be mindful that not every student has the same type of support systems at home.
Yeah, and to have it be a test grade is, I mean, he begged me not to email the teacher, so I did not, but it is tough not to. It's tough.
So with your permission, I would like to come back to you, probably not in September, but in the fall at some point, to let you know about the conversations that we're having, and we'll probably meet again in the.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work. Your mom was voted nicest committee member.
I didn't say nicest, I said just, you know, impressive.
Great, that's right.
I'm only a vote of one.
And thank you, Joe.
It was four, four zero, four zero favorite.
She was fantastic.
She was like, what did I vote for?
She finished top 10 in the northern district.
Totally voted for us, absolutely. Sherri was, all of our committee members were fantastic. I didn't include their names in my report, too, but I did thank them. And our email to the staff, Mr. Gagan was on our committee.
Yeah.
Just a lot of.
Also not top two.
Sorry. The kids were fantastic, so, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Inforce Technology System update, Dr. Bayetta?
Thank you. In promising the former chair to bring this topic up again, you provided the Inforce Technologies, this was an issue when Sherri was the chair, which is the app that goes at all five schools, that can be placed on all of our computers, has direct access to the police, 911, and so on and so forth. I'm just informing the committee, I'm not using choice money, but the first money that I can find within the operating budget, I really think we need to do it. I've had a lot of discussion with the SRO about this, that we just don't have another way to go, to go directly, because we don't have direct phone lines in classrooms and so on and so forth. So I'm just informing the committee, that's the route that I'm trying to take. Of course, I'll, I'll tell you if it happens before I do it, like I do with any monies during the summertime.
Is this a recurring expense?
Yes, it comes down, it comes down. It starts at 12, and then it comes down. I don't want to lie to you, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's $300 less.
So, so we had this conversation before. At that point, I thought that we had kind of discussed it, it didn't sound like a great idea, great value. At the same time, this number seems like it's less.
It is, it's $3,000 less if I negotiated with them. It was meant for 15 to 12.
All right.
And that was, that was negotiated.
I actually thought it was more than 15, because I remember.
It's $21,000. It's, it's $21,000, but they came down to your, to the 15, you actually saw it in the write-out that I gave you, it is at 21 for 15. And what they're trying to do, because they're, right now, there really isn't any competition that works the way their system works. There's competition like the town one that we have. But that's a, that's a total one. Matter of fact, I just got one the other day when the election was canceled, because I'm part, I get that, I don't, I think Terry, I got to tell me. Yeah, I got to. So we're at 12,000, it is a recurring cost, it does come down, unless, I think it's $300 less after that. And we are now literally with surrounding districts that are all doing it, and we just don't have that direct access. And I think that at 12,000, again, finding it and, you know, so on and so forth, that's part of savings during the summertime. If I use school choice, because I need to get it before then, then of course, I'll communicate like I do in the summer unit. Okay?
Vote to approve the halfway 2020 school meals prices increases.
So this price increase we have, is being regulated. The USDA requires that we hit a weighted average price annually for our school lunch prices, so we're recommending a 12% increase for each of the lunch prices, as well as the breakfast price, and a 50% increase for the lunch price.
Can I ask why they're regulating what are average prices?
They've done it for years. It's USDA, they, it's part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. I don't really understand why we have to hit it in the regular number. So, so what happens is they base it off the, if I remember correctly, because I had this issue in my last district where we did not get a waiver, we got, we were supposed to be penalized, and then we ended up having to work with DESI to not be penalized, because we would audit it. So the idea is that when you get subsidized, you're getting X number of dollars. If your subsidy, correct me if I'm wrong, is greater than the price that you're charging anyone for a meal, then that makes you're making, that means you're making money above and beyond what the regular meal price actually is. So the idea is, if the subsidy is, I'm sorry, I need to read it here, it's three, 292. The goal of the act is that you're within a dime of the subsidy. And, and so we, through Matt's work and others, businessman, you can get, you can go for the one-time waiver, but then you need to utilize it. And if you remember the last time you voted a price increase, I believe was four years ago, maybe three years ago, it was the same rationale.
Right, so here's why the USDA is wrong, right? Because it's, if, if we, if we charge zero and they give us 292, it still comes out of our pledge, we still have to pay.
So here's what's happening. If you look at school districts that are in a city in particular, why do you think If you look at school districts that are in a city in particular, why do you think they're going to free lunch for everyone?
That's, well, I was, I was going to make the argument that it actually is, it makes more sense for us not to charge anyone, right?
Right. It's, but that's what's happening when you have school districts with 70, 80% free reduced lunch, they're saying, forget it. We're, we're going to deal with, and there, there are programs for this, there's grants out there and all that stuff. But when you're at the rates we're at, financially, it doesn't work.
So again, I don't understand the purpose of the program. Like it basically is saying you need to charge people more money. That's it. Doesn't accomplish.
Well, they, they, they utilize the increases in costs and then what your increases are in your, like our subsidy might be slightly more than a town next to us, which we might be actually slightly less than the town on the other side, depending on where your prices are. So the idea here is that every couple of years, you're going to have to raise your prices. It's, it's just a given. You know, it's, we, we won't, we will not get another waiver. We've, you know, already went through that process. We have to act on it. It has nothing to do with any revolving account that we have. It has nothing to do with the privatization. It has nothing to do with any of that. It has to do with.
What's the fine? What's the?
No subsidy. We don't, we can't do that. We, we cannot survive on that. You're talking six figures. So that's the reason, that's the rationale.
So we have to, once again, tax our, our student families, students' families?
Yes. In this particular case, at, at what I would consider yet another, you know, unfunded mandate.
It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't accomplish anything. That's federal government for you, right?
So Matt, so Matt's asking that you, yes.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve the FY 2020 school meals price increase? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against.
Against.
Again, we have to do it, but I would pick out, survive, no?
It's not a problem.
Please, the only, the only problem I have is if we end up with three symbolic votes out of five, we're in trouble. And if we end up with two symbolic votes, we're in trouble.
Before I took, before I, no, I did a quick head count, who do we have here? Four.
I'm just saying, because.
How did we end up with food services this year? As far as, I know, I'm totally catching you off guard, but.
We're, but we're still waiting for the year to finish out. We'll send you a mail.
Tomorrow. When there's no lunch.
Exactly.
We're in a.
I just didn't know if there was a, like a, you know, somewhat of an update.
We're dealing with outstanding bills, that's a continuation. As you know, I don't know if you've been reading the paper or looking at the local news, there's a lot of discussion about a state bill that's on the state house right now that we, you know, you have to give the child a hot lunch, you can't give them the secondary lunch of the cheese sandwich.
Rhode Island schools.
So, yeah, we don't want to be on Fox 25 or that. But now it looks like, and this is my concern, here we go again with legislation that doesn't need to happen. Best practices need to happen. School superintendents, my colleagues are, we've been talking a lot about this, every director should be told, run that negative, just keep, the kid cannot be singled, singled out because their parents can't afford it or choose not to afford it. And I'm hoping that we don't get yet another piece of legislation that now, you know, because I'm concerned that legislation will actually make it more difficult for us to encumber and go, go out and get our funds. So, and our parents are, are working with us and in 99% of the cases, it's situations of knowledge and/or lack of financial support.
Well, thank you for overseeing that. Other business?
Yes, just, you have handouts. I just wanted to, this is just for your information, the Education Alliance report is just the, the key points as per my office after I read the report, and then just the findings of the alliance, including their recommendations, which you're going to see are very much aligned to our vision 2022 as we come back to you in the fall. The next one is the school start time committee. I am going to ask that one of you sit on that committee. That is a review of pre-K to 12, our school start times and what that really means. The, so if someone is interested, great. If you're not interested, tell me and you want to decide, discuss it more, then we can do it in the fall.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Wow.
I knew you wouldn't do it. You don't need to do more.
Thank you, Ms. Gallo. The Route 123 work, so this is the sewer line coming all the way down across this to the, to the housing authority across from Speedway, which will pick up our Yale school and high school. Project timeline is roughly July 8th start at the Wheaton where the plant is, the treatment plant is, coming out on Fillmore onto 140, then at the same time, just past the 140, 123 crossover at the lights, just down the road from there, they're going to start coming this way.